Okay, it's 7 o'clock. So we are live and we are ready to go on our first ever remotely broadcasted city council meeting. Just some housekeeping orders before we call the meeting to order. This is something that Ms. Kent helped me with. Some other committees have been using this. It's a script for remotely conducted meetings. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, President of the City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So if you could all type in "me," I can check to make sure everybody's good. Council Flowers, Council Rotundo Feldman, Houseman, Council Ames, Council Rand. I know Ms. Kent is here. That doesn't add up to nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And there's Council Flaherty. Thank you. Introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Beverly City Council. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law, and we will need to do that at our next meeting because we have five or six public hearings that we'll schedule this evening. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by Council President to reduce background noise and feedback. If you'd like to speak, as in the previous meeting, write me in chat, and Council President will call on you when it is your turn to speak. Very importantly, tonight, every vote that we take will be a roll call vote. So my little spiel at the end of every order will be, question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order, and then I'll say, "Roll call," and Ms. Kent will go down through the list. And I think that that's where we're at right now. So I will say, "Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, April 13, 2020." Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames.
Unmute and say, "Here."
Unmute yourselves and just say, "Here." Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Brady?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
I am here. Councilor Houseman, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
If you can put the screen to my location, you will see that I have an American flag behind me, and I don't know if you can see it.
Everybody can see it. We can see you also.
Okay. All right. So I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America, and to the republic-
And to the republic for which it stands-
For which it stands one nation-
Under God-
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you, Councilor Houseman. And I have, we have communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have communications from other city offices and boards. What we can vote on from the floor, that's what we'll do tonight. We can do that because of Rule 22 in City Council Rules and Orders. And at the end of the meeting, we'll have reports from committees, and Ms. Kent will read out the things that are in committees: Finance and Property, Legal Affairs, and Public Services, and we'll vote them out as a whole. So, that said, let's go to acceptance of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous two meetings that were held, our regular meeting on Monday, March 9, 2020, and our Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was held on Wednesday, March 25, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Amy.
Say, "Yes." Every vote's a roll call.
Yes. Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
My annoying.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Order number 87. Dear Honorable City Council, I'm pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $7,974.36 FFY 2020 Community Traffic Safety Project grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research. Funding for this grant is made possible by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. This grant funding will be used for the purchase of child passenger safety seats and to provide educational information outreach regarding the safe installation of child car seats. The Beverly Fire Department maintains a child passenger safety seat installation inspection station, which is free to the public. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expanded for this prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your next meeting. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yay.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. Very good. Now, order number 88. Ms. Kent.
Order number 88. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $4,980.90 FFY 2020 Child Passenger Safety Seat Grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research. Funding for this grant program is made possible by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. This grant funding will be used for the purchase of child passenger safety seats, with a focus on providing them for disadvantaged families in Beverly. The Beverly Fire Department maintains a child passenger safety seat installation inspection station, which is free and open to the public. Mass General Law, 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expanded for this prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter on your upcoming meeting, April 13, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. I would entertain a motion to accept that request from Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yay.
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Ms. Kent, we'll go to order number 89.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded the following grants from the Mass Department of Transportation, Mass DOT Aeronautics: A mower with solar canopy for $30,000 with no match; Tree removal, $8,000 with a 2,000 airport match; Snow plow blower, $120,000 with a $30,000 airport match; propane tractor with attachments, $70,607.46, no match. Total grant funding awarded is $228,670.46. Funding for these grants will be used for required maintenance and improvements at the Beverly Regional Airport. The tree removal and snow blower grant requires matches of $2,000 and $30,000 respectively, which will require a transfer from the Airport Enterprise Fund. This transfer request will necessitate a public hearing prior to any final action by the City Council. In addition to the transfer request, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expanded for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve these grants, as well as the requested match transfer, by setting a public hearing at your meeting on Monday, April 13, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the grants.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yay.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And Ms. Kent, we didn't talk about setting a public hearing for this portion of the order?
Um, we did not, so we would-
Correct. So I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, April 27 at, um-
We'll do 8:10.
8:10 would be great.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yay.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you. And now let's move on to order number 90.
Okay, 90. Hold on one sec. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $35,286 district incentive grant for COVID-19 response funds. This grant funding is part of a regional grant, which will benefit several Norsha communities. Beverly has received the aforementioned funding via its host community, Salem. The funding is specifically for local health with a priority towards COVID-19 surveillance and case identification, including contact tracing. Mass General Law, Section 53, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant at your meeting on April 13, 2020. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call to accept.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And I know that our Director of Grants, Kathryn Barrett, is listening in or watching. Ms. Barrett, do you want to make a comment about any of those grants, or are they pretty straightforward?
They're pretty straightforward, but I just want to thank everyone for reviewing them tonight and accepting them and approving them, particularly the COVID-19 one. We desperately need those funds to support Bill Burke and our Public Health Department and Teresa as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Barrett while she's on? Members of the council? Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Your attendance is much appreciated.
Thanks.
Okay. We will go on to order number 91. Ms. Kent.
Order number 91. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a transfer from the Airport Enterprise Fund balance of $100,000 to fund work associated with the testing and monitoring of property at the airport. This ongoing work is necessary to comply with D and B requirements. Please initiate action on this matter at your next city council meeting, April 13, 2020. This transfer request will require a public hearing be set prior to a council vote. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for Monday, April 27, 2020, at 7:55 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call in favor.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept a late file on order number 96 from Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Ms. Kent, the order, please.
Order number 96. Dear Honorable City Council, in September of 2018, the city and all AFSCME units agreed to the terms of a three-year contract agreement. The contract was funded and implemented as outlined subsequent to that. All other bargaining units either reached the agreement or were granted an award for the same contract period. In an effort to be fair to all units, the city has offered, and some units within AFSCME have accepted, an additional component to the original agreed contract. Attached to this correspondence is a signed side letter agreement for the two AFSCME units that have reached the terms of the side letter. I respectfully ask that you approve a transfer request of $16,464 from the reserve from union negotiations, 11324/57810, to be placed into the school department budget, 13104/57000. I ask the City Council to initiate action on this matter at your next council meeting. To transfer request will require a public hearing be set prior to council vote. Thank you. Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would ask, before I ask to set the public hearing, if our Finance Director, Brian Ales, or our Mayor, Michael Cahill, would like to make a comment? If not, that's fine. We can save it for the public hearing. Okay. I would entertain a motion to... Somebody's chiming in. No?
Yeah, Mr. President, it's me. It's Mayor Cahill. I just want to thank you folks for taking me on, and definitely I'll have something to say during the public hearing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for on April 27, 2020, at 7:40 PM.
So moved.
I heard a second. Ms. Kent, a roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file on order number 97 from His Honor, the Mayor.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. The order, Ms. Kent.
Order number 97. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review as provided in Section 2-10 of the Beverly City Charter, Ms. Darlene Wynn, to serve as Director to Planning and Development. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
We cannot do anything with that tonight, but we will refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Now's a good time to thank Aaron Claussen, our outgoing planning director. I know that he's the new Director of Planning in Lynn, and of course, we wish him the best. Now, either Brian Ales or Mayor Cahill, you wanted to introduce another late file.
I, yes, I have one.
Mr. Pres-
Oh, you do?
You got the one from the solicitor, Ms. Kent?
Yes, Stephanie just emailed it to me.
Okay.
I'm happy to explain a bit after she reads it, Mr. President, if you'd like.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. The late file, Ms. Kent.
Uh, the late file will be number 98. Order that, dear Honorable City Council, I think I would probably say, that the City Council accept a gift of tangible personal property on behalf of the city in accordance with Section 58 and a half, Chapter 44 of the Mass General Law, in the form of the face masks already donated by and to be donated by private individuals and organizations to the city for the purpose of providing residents, entities, and/or others in need of, all others in need of masks during the COVID-19 emergency. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Your Honor?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yes, so this is, everything's moving fast, and I appreciate your willingness to take this as a late file. We have, as I think you know, we put out the call for volunteers when we started really promoting and advising strongly that we need people to wear face coverings when they're out and about in public and when they go shopping, et cetera. So we now have several dozen, I think it might be in the range of about 80, masks that have been made by volunteers that we want to accept. We also, just in the last few days, have had two sizable offers to donate surgical masks to the city that we will try to... We're going to be working with our COVID-19 Task Force tomorrow at a meeting, and be working to communicate with a lot of our community partners. I'm sorry. Working to communicate with partners who are in the medical field, who operate some really challenged, congregate-living settings, et cetera, around how to best utilize that resource. And so what we're asking is for the ability to accept what's being offered and future offers of materials that could be considered PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, as a way of trying to help meet the need throughout the community and, you know, in this really challenging time. So thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any questions for the Mayor? No questions? I would entertain a motion to accept the request.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
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 Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 92 from the City Clerk, Ethical and Brand Corp., requests the Sandwich Board sign for 112 Rentschel Street.
I would refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 94, the comment from the Councilwoman, called "Wong Ho Wong for the City Clerk Position."
I would entertain a motion to approve, approve that letter, and then we'll move that along to Human Resources, so we can finally officially hire a city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Brady's.
He falls asleep sometimes.
Houseman?
Well, yes, yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And I must say that it's been a really difficult time for you to jump into the position of acting city clerk, but you've performed, you've performed amazing so far, so we only have good things to look forward to. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from, on order number 95 from Councilor Houseman.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Brady's?
Oh, sorry, I went out of order.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. And Councilor Houseman, would you like to either read your report or make a few comments on it?[1526.36]
Well, the report's fairly lengthy, so unless you want me to read it, I won't. I'll just summarize it to say that we are in the midst of a great and urgent need for housing for homeless here in Beverly, and there are efforts underway potentially to find, to use St. Mary's convent, which is vacant, has been vacant for a while, to potentially use that site as a location for housing folks from River House. Whether that happens will be up to sort of a regional discussion amongst mayors, but that is a potential that is under consideration. That sort of summarizes the report.
And what would you like us to do with your letter? Refer it to committee, refer it to the mayor's office?
Well, it is a report, so I actually think it can be received in place on file unless you think it's appropriate for it to rest in, I suppose it could go to public, well, actually, I suppose it'd go to public services.
Yeah, we can do that.
But I leave it to your discretion, your discretion at that.
Okay, Council Flaherty would like to make a comment.
Council Houseman, are there other places up for consideration besides St. Mary's?
Within the city, not that I'm aware of, you know, the mayors of Lynn, Salem, and Beverly have looked at and inquired about many different locations, none of which have really panned out. It's possible that the convent might not pan out, but none of the others have really been, have really spent either permission given or suited to their purpose. There is a, as I think you may have read in last week's Salem Evening News, there is a center at Salem Fieldhouse next to their high school, which has both an isolation area for folks who need to be in self-isolation for 14 days, and then sort of a stepped-up area for folks who actually maybe need to be in quarantine. There is also a regional center that has been set up by the state, by MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, I believe, for homeless folks who have actually tested positive and need medical treatment. So, you know, the capacity is fairly limited. At the Salem Fieldhouse, for those in self-isolation, there are sites for 10 women, 10 men at this point. There's not staffing to do more than that. There are 10 additional quarantine sites there as well for folks who have actually, you know, tested positive or showing, you know, showing presence of the virus. So, capacity is fairly limited. Those sites, the Fieldhouse, the Lexington site, and any hospitalization, of course, are reactive to the situation. The prospect or the potential for using the convent would, would hopefully be a proactive step that could be taken to create a housing in which folks who are presently in River House and unable to self-isolate, because there are too many people in too small a space, would be able to have housing that would, essentially by definition, due to the physical space, because there are separate rooms with washbasins and so forth, would be able to maintain appropriate social distancing. So it'd be a proactive step. It's not a perfect site, none of the sites are perfect, but it is measurably better than what is presently available at River House, and which, in my personal opinion, is sort of a site that, it seems, given the spread, the contagion of the virus, that it may only be a question of time, in my opinion, not a question of when, that River House might end up with an infection, at which point the entire, the entire center, the entire site, would have to be shut down. So this is a way to take, it would be a way to take a proactive step. You know, that process is still very much underway, and, you know, I know the mayor has been involved as, and I also want to give a thanks to Councilor Ames and Councilor Flaherty for helping at different points move along considerations of providing housing for the homeless and including St. Mary's. So, that's perhaps, I don't know, hopefully that answers your question, Council Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Ames?
First, I wanted, I want to sincerely thank Councilor Houseman and the city, the mayor, for working collaboratively with the other communities and just trying to find a proactive solution. I think this is really an important public health issue is one, as well as one that speaks to just who we are as a community and our general humanity towards each other. So it's important. I just was hoping that Councilor Houseman or the mayor might be able to speak to a timeframe, hopeful, and sort of some budget. I know you had some budget numbers in your first go-around, the first memo, and I was wondering if there was any, you know, thing you could share with us for budget and timeframe.
Thank you.
And that was a question for either the mayor or Councilor Houseman?
I would defer to the mayor, if he's online.
Hi, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you.
So there are a number, there are a number of things that probably need to be touched on here. First, Councilor Houseman and I have talked over the weekend about things, and we've both had communications with the Beverly Catholic Collaborative. I can tell you that the request that we made to the collaborative, which through them was made to the Archdiocese, was for a way to address the isolation and self-quarantining needs of our homeless individuals. A suggestion that the site would be used for something different than that is not something that we have before them as a request. I have no idea whether that would be considered. We are awaiting a response on the request that we have made. So there are a number of kind of levels of need here. And initially, isolation, isolation of somebody who tests positive, who is symptomatic but not so sick that they need to be in the hospital and can isolate somewhere with supports and supervision and check-ins, right? So, as Councilor said, the state has worked hard to set up isolation sites. They now have, the initial site was in Lexington, there's now one in Pittsfield. They are trying to finalize getting a Revere site and a Cambridge site up. These are all hotels, and so, you know, the thought is that if somebody needs to isolate, they need to be in one space and not go out for up to 14 days. So a self-contained unit that has a bath, shower, even in some cases, kitchen, television, and the like, is all really, you know, kind of needed to stay in one place for all that time. Then, as we were discussing with the church, the possibilities at St. Mary's, the, our work regionally led to the identification and the agreement that the Salem High School Fieldhouse would meet the needs for isolation, potentially indefinitely self-quarantining. It's become clear as that was being set up that we hoped that any isolation needed there would only be very, very time-limited, as someone was waiting to get a test result and then referred over to one of the isolation sites regionally. So that changed the way that we're looking at the convent at St. Mary's, and, you know, the leadership at the local Catholic Collaborative is trying to be, you know, trying to be responsive and listen to what our needs are and try to understand our needs and see if they can be helpful. And as I said, we're awaiting a response on that initial request, which I think they understood by the time we really, you know, kind of last spoke with them, that when you look at the St. Mary's convent and you look at the fact that the Salem Fieldhouse is set up and the isolation's taken care of, that it really would be kind of a pressure release, kind of a next step, or I don't want to say a last resort, but only to be really needed if in fact Salem gets oversubscribed. And so, again, if, you know, for them to consider something different, if that hasn't been brought to them, I'm not sure how that would be received. I do know that in speaking with Jason Etheridge at Lightbridge, the Lightbridge Director, the information about what is actually the capacity at Salem in kind of more well-defined, he said this afternoon that they are currently set up for 45 individuals, that they could go as high as 100. He said if they were to take on more than 45, he'd probably add staffing. But there's certainly enough space and enough separate spaces. There's the large, wide-open Fieldhouse, there's a second, smaller gym, and then there are the locker room areas. So there are four real separate spaces that you could look at there. And then, you know, I'll also talk a bit more about the census at both River House and the Salem Life Bridge Shelter itself, both of which censuses are down from their capacity. So I think the conversation around, you know, the populations that are there, and, excuse me, an ability to distance better, I think that's a really valuable conversation that Councilor raises. I think it's one that'll be probably explored more significantly now that the temporary shelter is up and available for use. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, I guess the only comment I would make is there have been, I think, two separate asks. There was an initial request that I submitted to the collaborative, maybe going on two weeks ago. And so, you know, the mayor and I have been talking and trying to, you know, coordinate communication, deferring largely to the mayor, but having continuing conversations with the Catholic Collaborative and the Archdiocese. So, you know, the mayor and I have agreed to talk more about the potential use of the convent as potential housing, as opposed to, you know, which I view as sort of preventative measuring, a measure to attempt to bend the curve for the River House residents and perhaps others as well, versus what he's described as sort of a safety valve for isolation or quarantine. And, you know, the discussion and the learning process around guidance and protocols and what is possible evolves pretty much on a daily basis. So it is a continuing conversation as we try to most appropriately address, you know, the evolving situation. And, you know, the kind of use for the convent, I think, is part of that evolving set of circumstances in conversation.
Thank you, Councilor. So why don't we leave that alive, and we'll refer that to the Committee on, no, Stacy Ames, Councilor Ames would like to speak again.
Yeah, Mr. President, I don't think I answered Councilor Ames's question. Does she want to maybe repeat it, and I'll try to give it an answer?
Councilor Ames?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I was looking for a timeline and also some idea of the capital, you know, the money it would cost to set this up. But I also think that, you know, as you've been an extremely effective communicator in terms of social distancing and had some innovative ways to encourage that for the city, I think that this is yet another really, really important way that we can, as a community, social distance. So, but thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, well said. As far as the setup, if we, if we find that it's necessary for the convent to be put into use, and first, if the, if the Archdiocese and the local Catholic Collaborative agree that it makes sense to do so, and then we find a need to activate it, I think our sense is that with the relevant city departments devoted to making sure that the safety improvements, which are largely around alarms and making sure that doors are in the proper working order and that the plumbing is as need be, I think, I think it would be something that we could put up in a matter of a couple of days. So we, you know, we'd be, we'd be tracking the need and, you know, ready to move on it when needed, if it comes to that. So thank you again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else? Thank you all for your comments. Ms. Kent, would you please refer that to the Committee on Public Services?
Sure.
Are you coming back on the screen? There you are. So we're going to go to reports from committees now. Ms. Kent, we set a public hearing for the matching funds for the airport grant for what time?
The airport was for...
8:10?
8:10, yes.
So the one that we have in Finance and Property for the COLA adjustment, we'll set that one for 8:20, okay?
8:20, okay.
So now we'll start, reports from committees.
So this is from Finance and Property, order number 70. It was a late file for the reappointment of Brian Ailes, for Finance Director to serve as the mayor's representative of the retirement board.
All those in favor of that appointment? Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, thank you.
Order number 71, the grant for $48,000 for supportive infrastructure, project grant from Mass Seaport Economic Council.
I would entertain a motion to approve that grant.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call in favor.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers? Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, I like it when everybody's face comes up. Ms. Kent, next.
Order number 78, this is for transfer up to $195,000 from city's reserve for unforeseen account into building inspections department to pay costs for demolished property at 11 Child Street. We're going to set a public hearing at 7:15 on April 27th.
A motion to approve that request?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
In favor, roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, Councilor Houseman looks like the president's sitting there with the flag behind him at Camp David.
I was impressed with that flag.
It came in very handy. Ms. Kent?
Order number 79, Beverly Retirement Board, Chapter 188, Acts of, the Acts of 2010, Relative to Municipal Relief to Retirement System. And we're going to set a public, set a public hearing on April 27th at 8:20 PM.
A motion to approve that request?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Order number 84, it was late file for a grant for $98,206.59 from the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs.
A motion to approve that grant?
So moved.
Second.
Don't be shy. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to move on to Legal Affairs Committee. Order number 73, proposed amendment to Article 15-24A for contributory retirement board of the city ordinance.
Can we put that one on hold?
I think, yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Keep that one in committee.
Yep. Do we have to vote on that or not?
I don't think so.
Okay. Order number 74, reappointing Beverly Historic District Commission, Mr. William Finch, 50 Front Street.
Motion to approve that one?
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, and thank you to Mr. Finch for continuing his service on the Historic District Commission. Ms. Kent?
Order number 77, vehicles and traffic ordinance revision compliant with Mass DOT traffic control agreement. Hold that one?
No, we can vote that one out. A motion to approve that request?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
And order number 85, a hockers and pedals license for Ellen Wilson at 6 Sawyer Road.
A motion to approve that request?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
And now we're moving on to Public Services. Order number 72, proposed 2020 member rate for the golf and tennis club.
I would entertain a motion to approve what was presented before us?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's? Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes, it must be getting past Council Brady's bedtime because he sounds like he's getting a little agitated.
Florida hours.
Florida hours, and remember, although we approved the rates at the golf course, the golf course is still closed. Ms. Kent?
Order number 75, reappointment for the Beverly Waste Reduction Committee, Susan Higgins, Joyce Herman, and Sandy Burgess.
Motion to approve those.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
Order 76, reappointment for the register of voters, Mrs. Fran McDonald, one of my favorites.
Yes, she is, one of all of our favorites. I would entertain a motion to approve that request?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?[1779.84] Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and we'll thank Mrs. McDonald for her continued service.
And order number 70, is a petition from National Grid in Verizon for the MacPherson Drive to set a public hearing on April 27 at 7:30.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes.
And order number 81, petition for National Grid at Verizon for Ball Street to set a public hearing on April 27 at 7:45.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady's?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci.
Yes.
All I got.
And that's all we have for tonight. First, I want to thank Brian Ailes for being here, Catherine Barrett, Dylan Benson from the City Solicitors Office, of course, Mayor Cahill, and City Council Budget Analyst Jerry Pyrie has been watching and listening, and also. Quick thank you to Mayor Cahill and the Beverly Board of Health for keeping everybody updated here in the city with messages and emails and posts on the city website. Special thanks to Jim Wallace in the Beverly Chamber of Commerce, Jim Wallace from Beverly Main Streets, for keeping the business community updated with the changes that seem to be happening weekly. Does anybody else have anything to add before we adjourn?
Mr. President?
Nobody's saying me. Yes.
Mr. President, this is Mayor Cahill. I just want to say aloud for everybody, we miss Aaron Claussen already very much, and I'm excited to be able to bring Darlene Wynn's name before you. I think she'll do a fantastic job with, you know, with your approval. I just want to take a minute to thank Aaron publicly. We hope that, we certainly intend that when we get through this, where we're at right now with COVID-19, that we're going to have a proper send-off for him, have him back and have a nice chance of people to thank him. He's been a tremendous professional, he's done some amazing work on our behalf for six-plus years, and I just want to note that. He's a wonderful man, he's a great planner and a better person, and he's been just a joy to work with all this time. So I want to make sure that I have the chance to say that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, and I'm sure we'll all, we echo those comments. He's been a pleasure to work with, as are all your department heads, Your Honor. Anybody else? Okay, so just to wrap up, I think that everybody did a great job tonight. I appreciate everybody's patience and for making comments. I guarantee you our next meeting, full city council meeting, which will be held remotely on April 27 at 7:00 PM. Probably won't go as smooth, because we have five or six public hearings to take care of, but Ms. Kent and I will practice, and if anybody else has any suggestions on how we can make everything go smoother, I'm always open to them. So that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Oh, I lost my roll call speed. Feldman?
Me.
Feldman?
Yes.
Brady's?
I'm not going out of order.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Guanci?
Yes, and thanks to Kim Elaine at BevCamp for making this all happen. We are adjourned. Thank you and good night, everyone.